Hey, good evening and welcome to the April 23rd, 2019 City Council Meeting. First order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Forsma.
Here.
Caravallo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mijesci.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
There are twelve Alders present.
Thank you. Next order of business would be communications. Is there any communications from council members?
Oh, yes.
Elder Person Hirsch, you're over here tonight.
I know.
I was looking over here when I heard your voice. You moved.
Completely forgot. Um, I just want everybody to know that Samuel Stoughton is having a big Earth Day Expo that's coming Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. at the Lagarette, which is at 5:15 East Main Street. There is presentations on electric vehicles with our WPPI, Corey Neely. There's Parrot Sanctuary presentation. There's a presentation on how to design and establish a pollinator and butterfly garden, actually onsite. There's over, probably about 70 vendors, anything from artists to farmers to solar panels to low VOC paint to whatever you can imagine. It's, anything sustainable is there. And we have a kid's tent that has activities all day long, from make your own tee-shirt to face painting to storybook. The library is reading a story. I mean, there is so much going on. And plus, there is a giant, creating a giant plastic monster. I'm sure you all saw that in the Hub where Santiago, a child from one of our schools approached Samuel Stoughton back in October to see, he's really concerned and he wanted to bring awareness about plastic pollution in our environment. And he designed this float of this giant plastic wave eating the earth. And the children during the event will be attaching plastic, you know, things that aren't recycled or supposedly recycled to this monster to create this giant monster to bring awareness of all the plastic that we use. And that float will be in the Bolseth and Amay parades. So please come down, volunteer if you want. We're still looking for some volunteers, but just come down and enjoy yourself. It's gonna be a great event. And pray for sunny weather. Right now it looks like the only day this week that it's supposed to be raining. So please pray for sunny weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Elder Person Forsma.
I just have one question. Is it gonna be live? Is it pretty?
Um, I don't know, Sid. Are you live or? Sid will be, Sid will be playing as well as Olivia Pantoffler in the afternoon. And, uh, yeah, it's just, every, every community, I mean, we have different facets of all of the community gonna be there, so.
Sure, but again, go ahead and give the date time again.
The date is this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. And there's activities all day long and vendors will be there all day long.
We have a website, right?
And it's on the website and Facebook page. So, welcome, 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 and come join us.
Okay. Any other communications? I have one. I just wanted to let council members in the community know that May 14th is International Firefighters' Day. We don't have a meeting between now and then, so I just wanted to let people know that. So if you see a firefighter between now and then, please thank them for their efforts. Moving on, presentations. We're only gonna do one tonight. You will be spared. Attorney Dregney is gonna do an update on 801 Coolidge Street and the presentation on open meetings and ethics laws we're gonna cover at the next meeting. But those items are in your packet, so please read them. If you have any questions between now and then, you can either email a man or you can save them for the next meeting. Attorney Dregney.
Thanks, Your Honor. You'll recall that the city was going through a raise order process with respect to a home located on Coolidge. And the property was going through a mortgage foreclosure process as well. So it's our understanding that the bank has acquired that property now and has communicated with the city its intention to raise the building itself, so we won't have to do that.
Beautiful.
Just one slight correction, just to update the council. There was actually a share of sale. There actually were no bidders on this, at the share of sale. So the bank is pursuing acquisition and title, clear title to that property. Their intentions are to raise the building themselves and then market the property. So we're recommending that that continue its course as opposed to having the city take over that process.
Minutes and reports are in the packet. It takes us to public comment period. We have one person signed up. Jim Ramsey is here to introduce himself. Jim, you have three minutes. Can you do it in three minutes?
I think so. I hope, no, I shouldn't go any longer than that. Hi, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jim Ramsey. I've met some of you already at the last council meeting, but I wanted to take this opportunity to formally introduce myself as the new library director of the Stoughton Public Library, taking over for Richard McDonald, who, as you all know, retired at the beginning of this month. Really no more than that, just to introduce myself. I know Richard had a great working relationship with the council and I'm sure that will continue. I'm a very easy guy to get along with. And if you have any questions about the library, about how, how we're governed, how we work, anything going on at the library, feel free to ask me. We also, of course, have Gene Legaki is the council liaison on our library board. So feel free to, to get in touch with me directly about any questions you might have. I should add, this might be overly ambitious, but it's my goal in the next maybe weeks and months to meet with all of you individually, if you, if you'd like to, if you're willing to, and just talk about the library and about what we can do for the community and about what you see as the opportunities for, for Stoughton and for the library specifically, but for the community of Stoughton as a whole. That's all.
And before you leave, just so council knows, we have a tour set up with Jim to meet all the department heads. And any council members are always welcome to go on the tour to the different buildings. Some of you have done that. And there's something new set up at the library, isn't there?
New, are you referring to the TARDIS? Yeah. So if any of you are, yeah, I don't know if any of you are Doctor Who fans, I confess that Doctor Who was kind of a pop cultural blind spot for me, but I'm being, I'm bringing myself up to speed. So in the television show Doctor Who, long running British television series, they travel through space and time in this police call box, basically a phone booth, a blue, big blue phone booth. And they call it the TARDIS, which is short for, nobody help me out, no. It's an acronym.
Transcendental Grooviness.
Huh?
I said transcendental grooviness, but.
Yeah. It's a time and relative dimension in space. That's what it is. So there is a full-scale replica of that in the mezzanine of the library built by Eagle Scout Luke Venu. And it's gonna be there temporarily, but for the foreseeable future. And we built a whole month or so, or more of programming around it. And yeah, come and check it out. It's really.
All right. Thank you. Elder Person Reeves.
I did take a tour when I was elected and I, I thought I knew my way around the library, but taking that personal tour is fantastic. There's, I mean, it's a gem, but there were things in there that I had no idea. So if you have not, even if you've lived here for a really long time, I'd suggest that personal tour is fantastic because there's so much there to offer that I had no idea.
Yes, thank you. I'd be, I'd be happy to give anybody who would like a personal tour of the library that can be part of our meeting. So I would like to, you know, I plan in the next month or so to try to reach out to all of you individually. And if you're interested, if you're available, I'd love to meet with you face to face and that can include a tour of the library.
Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Next item is our consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are routine items that we put together on the agenda and vote them all at once to make things more efficiently. Tonight we have some minutes on there issuing operators license to bartenders and then some Stoughton Utilities items. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, a second by Haley. Would anybody like anything removed from consent agenda and voted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. The consent agenda carries. There's no old business. New business is ordinance 12 of 2019. That comes from the Plan Commission. Not sure who wants to introduce it. We have new members on there, either Elder Person Bartlett or, or Mijesci is the new chair. But Matt, you wanna do it? Do it. You're still on there at that point, right?
Yep. Bringing forth ordinance 12 of 2019, amending section 6-2, 78-105 and 78-206, paragraph 78, appendix C relating to accessory uses and structures in keeping of honeybees, regulation of animals. And move to approve?
Second.
Actually, it's a first reading. Sorry.
Withdraw a second.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion to waive the rules.
Would you not have a, just have a first reading?
Okay. And there was a second by Jensen. So a motion to waive the rules requires a two-thirds vote. And if that passes, then we can vote on the action tonight instead of waiting until the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that? Elder Person Haley.
If we did that, would it be passed as is right now?
Um, it would go back to the motion. We could still amend it if we'd like. All we're doing now is waiving the rules, so we could actually take action on it tonight.
Yes, I just had a wording issue that.
Okay. So we'll do the waiving of the rules first and then we'll come back and I'll come back to you right away. Any other questions on the motion on the floor to waive the rules? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So that takes us back to the original motion. And Elder Person Haley, did you have something you wanted to correct?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify in Exhibit B, that's section 78-206, under location and standards number three, in each instance in which a colony is situated within 25 feet of and the entrance faces a property line. I wanted to clarify, is that the entrance facing that same property line that it's within 25 feet of? I don't know who would be.
Can I just, I just wanna make sure, I'm looking at the language. This says, "In each instance in which a colony is situated within 25 feet of a property line." Is that what you read?
So.
Exhibit B you're on?
What's? Exhibit.
B3. This is Exhibit B.
Exhibit B, B3.
Section B3.
Of the bee law.
Yeah, there we go.
In each instance in which a colony is situated within 20 feet, 5 feet of and the entrance faces a property line, a flyaway barrier is required. So I'm wondering if, say, the hive is, hive entrance is 10 feet away from a property line, but the entrance is facing away from that.
So here's, first of all, I, that language isn't in my ordinance, so that must have been added by the committee, the language of "and the entrance faces a property line." But what that means is if, so these hives have openings.
Yes.
I assume the, when it says the entrance, I assume that means the opening to the hive. If that faces the property line, then the flyaway barrier is required, but if not, apparently not. So that would be.
Where are you looking at?
So ready, under location.
Did that answer your question?
I'm at four.
So it would have to be facing the property line that it is 25 feet or less from, for this barrier to be required?
Well, so this barrier is required if two conditions are met. One, the colony is located within 25 feet of the line of the property line. And two, the entrance or the opening to the hive faces, it says, well, it says faces a property line. It doesn't say faces the property line that's closest. So there's a drafting here there.
Right, yeah, 'cause I was confused about that.
Should say, and faces, within, is within 25 feet of a property line and the opening of the hive faces that particular property line. I need to figure out how to fix that language.
The owner's line, not.
Well, any, it's gonna be on any property line. It's always gonna be, I think the issue here is it just says faces a property line. So that could be, you could be 300 feet from a property line that the opening faces and then you wouldn't require the flyaway barrier. The problem is it just says faces a property line.
I would move to amend based on the attorney's recommendations for clarity in that point.
Okay, there's a motion to amend, a second by Jensen, so we need to do some quick wordsmithing.
It's just bad.
Do you have something or should I let these guys?
Well, I don't know, the people ask questions and I'm gonna toy with the language.
Elder Person Forsma and then Riley.
As I read this, or I'm guessing on the intention would be that if it's, if it's not facing your own property line, it's facing the neighbor's property line, that that's when the barrier would have to go up.
It's the same thing. There's a single property line. It's one line and between your house and your neighbor's house. It's not like your neighbor's line or your line, it's the same line.
Otherwise you'd go over the line. Elder Person Riley.
Wouldn't it be remedied by simply changing the word "a" to the word "that"?
That's, let's see, I think that would, "and the entrance faces that property line."
Right.
Bingo. See, there you go.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Does everybody have that? So any questions on the amendment? So the amendment is just the change in wording that was just described by Elder Person Riley. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So that gets us back to the original motion with the, a change or the amendment. Elder Person Hirsch.
I have a question and I don't, I see it's in a memo part of this on March 29th. It said that proposed ordinance amendment to create section 78-206, parent eight, parent Z to amend the section that, that it would not require any license or fee for the beekeeping.
Correct.
I guess I have a concern for that. If nobody is monitoring that people only have at the max two hives and that they're well-kept and that nobody's making sure that, it could be a big problem. I mean, I guess if there's no oversight, isn't that our job?
I think Attorney Dregney will explain the rationale and then if there's additional comments, the planning department, would you be the enforcer of that?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so I did have some discussion, I thought about this issue myself and then had some discussion with, I think, Mike Stacy about whether to require a licensing process or a permitting process here or not. And our conclusion was no for a couple of reasons. One, the fact that there's no licensing or permitting process doesn't mean that there's no enforcement. I mean, if there's a violation, there still can be an evaluation of that and, and enforcement action taken if somebody's violating the zoning code. So we chose to treat it like anything else where people are allowed to do things on their property without getting a permit or a license per se, but are still required to follow the rules.
Those are usually complaint driven, aren't they?
Typically, even if we did require a permit or a licensing process, well, the other issue, couple other concerns, yes, it would be complaint driven. The other concern was just the administrative, there was a balance here. It was the administrative burden on both the beekeeper and the zoning department worth it in terms of, you know, was the risk, was, was the danger here so high that it was worth the administrative burden? My judgment was that it isn't. I've got a number of communities that have adopted bee ordinances that allow beekeeping and there just really haven't been any problems. People are pretty good about it. Now, that's not to say you won't have one, but, so you could, if you wanted, you could say no. Everyone who wants to have one of these is gonna have to, you know, permit and get it renewed every year and we'll send somebody out to inspect every year. But then you've got a question, you've gotta ask how you're gonna staff that.
Yeah, the cost of the, wouldn't cover the cost, the cost of the license wouldn't cover the cost of the staff member going there to do the inspection.
I get that, but I'm just talking about public safety and also, you know, it is Earth Day speaking for the bees, making sure that they're well-kept and they're following the ordinance. If we have no idea who has bees, how do we even know how to enforce what is going on? I mean, maybe they need just to register when they decide to have bees and then every year might just check down a few. You know, it doesn't have to be a renewal, but we need to have some oversight because these are living organisms that we are expecting people to also know how to take care of and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, but this is clearly a policy question for the council.
Right.
But even if, let's say we did require some, that, that people registered at the outset, if you're gonna have bees, you've gotta do something so we know who has bees. That doesn't get anyone else there doing inspections. So then the next question would be, well, how often do you wanna do inspections? And that wouldn't be, you know, that, then it leads into that kind of a discussion.
Yeah, and my position would be.
I'd love for that to coalesce.
My, my position would be is if we have to have staff to go out and do inspections, I wouldn't even wanna allow it, period, because we don't have the capacity to be doing that. And that's just my position. And I think that the beekeepers that have been in here presenting their case are, are professional beekeepers. They take a lot of pride, there's an investment that's required for them to purchase and set up the areas for the bees. And if there are issues, I'm sure we're gonna hear about them, just like we do everything else. And we still would have a tool in place through the ordinance to go out and enforce. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that. If you don't agree with that, you can certainly, you know, make an amendment. That would be the option or, or to vote no.
Question?
Okay, so I have, who was first? I didn't see. Forsma and then Legaki.
Yeah, and as I understand it, this is going to be potentially consistent with another thing we're gonna pass in terms of chickens, that we're not gonna have enforcement policy on chickens?
I think that, yeah.
Well, that's not, that's not, that's a mischaracterization. We are having enforcement in the ordinance, we're just not gonna proactively go out there and randomly enforce it. So there is a tool in there for enforcement.
But, but my point is that it would be consistent with bees and chickens.
Right. And there's really about, probably it won't even be a handful of bees and maybe a couple dozen chickens that people have out there, so it's not a lot of them, but it's enough where it would create enough administrative work. And staffing is, is the challenge for that.
It would hurt to have a handful of bees, you know.
Yes, it would. Elder Person Legaki.
The keeping, the keeping of bees has gotten a bit more popular and I'm wondering, does any board, board member or any, does the attorney know if any municipalities have enforcement or plans? Does anyone do that? I'm not aware of anyone.
So the communities I work in that have allowed bees and one that I lived in that allowed bees, what, any enforcement was, was complaint-based. There wasn't a program in place that required permitting or licensing on the one hand and then, and, and any kind of a regular inspection program. So any enforcement would have been if a neighbor complained that there was some kind of a problem, then that could lead to the zoning administrator taking a look and if there's a problem, dealing with it at that, in that way.
So it was a, it was a reactive?
Right.
Type of situation as opposed to a?
Proactive.
Proactive and perfunctory, that this is just part of this, this is what we do?
That's what I have seen. I mean, you're certainly, you could certainly develop a more proactive approach if you wanted to do that, yeah.
Elder Person Schumacher.
Were the, in, 'cause I wasn't on with the parts of discussing which the beekeepers in there, do they have to have any sort of reporting into DNR or any sorts of things like that? Whether voluntary or mandatory?
I don't believe there's anything like that required for the bees, as I recall. I think there was something for chickens, some kind of registration requirement, but I'm just not remembering offhand what that was. Do you remember what that is, Holly?
To keep chickens, you have to register with the Department of Agriculture.
Correct.
I don't believe there's any such permit for bees, but for chickens there is.
I just wonder if this would be opportunities, at least for data collecting, as far as if, if any beekeepers experienced a hive collapse, that they might be able to localize things or, yeah, mostly in hive collapse, or at least with the chickens, they could maybe spot avian flus, things like that.
And is there something you'd like to see built into the process?
I guess, I would just wanted to know if there was any sort of mechanism. It sounds like there would be with the, or the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture with the chickens for certain. But I wonder if there would be any sort of statewide effort, 'cause I, you know, we know hive collapse is, is a significant problem, but.
I personally don't have any knowledge about whether there would be a way to develop some kind of relationship with the DNR on this issue. I'm not, I, my guess is that people are paying attention to this. You're right, it's kind of a big issue. I'm just not really knowledgeable about what that opportunity might look like.
I'm not either. I mean, you know, I'd be curious to reach out to the Department of Agriculture to see if they track that sort of data or, I can look for that and maybe report back.
What, what I would say is, I have a friend who's a beekeeper and people in that community, they're very active in, in, in terms of paying attention to what's happening, communicating with, within their community about it and trying to figure out, you know, how to deal with it. Whether or not there's a way to interface with either a state or federal agency on that, I'm just not.
Elder Person Reeves.
I, I think enforcement would be a, a challenge, just because I know what the planning department has on their plate. But in terms of registry, I think it'd be helpful to know, partly, I think they're a good resource to register. Bees do swarm, you know, that, that happens sometimes. And I, I think it'd be good to know who our experts are and who has bees, not to say that we need to go out and check on them personally, I'm not sure that would be, but even if they just, you know, if we just had record of who has them, I guess, I feel like that would be helpful information personally. And I'm not sure how, you know, if that means just letting somebody in the city know, pay a small fee. I guess I'm open to discussion about that, but.
Elder Person Hirsch.
I guess that's, I like, Elder Person Reeves is, that's what I was trying to get at, is that we need some mechanism to know who has bees, because if there is swarming bees, we need to all know who to go to. If we have no record of who actually has them, we can't even contact that beekeeper to come get their bees. We have, we have nothing. I mean, that to me is irresponsible. And it can just be a simple registration, sort of like what your dog takes. Every, you know, every year as you pay taxes, you fill out the form saying, "I have bees and I have chickens," and pay 10 bucks. And if there's a problem, at least we know who has them. I mean, it would be, so I would like to make that amendment that we have develop a, a simple registration process for beekeepers. I mean, I.
Second that.
Okay, so there's a motion by Hirsch and a second by Reeves, so it's a, it's an amendment to the motion. To, you, you want us to, you wanna have staff develop a registration procedure?
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to your dog thing. It comes every year and it, they just check, yes, I have two hives.
Does that need to come back here or do you just want us to set something up and put it in the ordinance? I mean, what's, what's the way to do that?
For expedience, then, 'cause I know a lot of beekeepers wanna get their queens this year and actually have it. I would say, I would leave it up to your staff to, to come up with a simple registration process that can be added in at the tax time.
And we could do that. The, the council tonight could adopt the, the zoning ordinance, which would clear out the zoning impediments to keeping bees and make the other change, one of the, change section 6-2. That would, that would allow people to keep bees and then we could come back with a registration requirement, if that's what you want us to do.
All right. Any, so we have a motion and a second to amend it to include the. Any, so we have a motion and a second to amend it to include the registration. Is there any discussion on that? All the person Legaki?
I would encourage that we try to have no cost on that, if we're just trying to be, have information and benefit from that information, so that if there are problems, we can act quickly. And I'd like to try to make that attractive for people to register their hive, that they don't see it as a burden or any money, that this is just, we just want this information in case there's issues.
Is that what you two are thinking?
I'm fine with that, if it's not, you know, if it's not a big staff burden, if you feel like there needs to be a fee to administer it, a small fee, I would say it's nominal.
You would probably be more trouble than it's worth, to be honest.
Okay, then I'd fine with that.
Okay.
I'd rather people being compliant than we have the information. Yep.
Okay. Did I see another hand up over here?
No, I think that addressed it. Thank you, Mary. I did, but I'm taking it down.
All right. Any other questions or comments? So the amendment would be to...
Can I just suggest, rather than treat this as an amendment to the ordinance, I would, I would suggest that the ordinance be handled as it is, and then after that's addressed, if the council wants to direct staff or me to prepare an ordinance to bring back with a registration requirement, we could do that. Because I don't think the intent is to amend this ordinance with the registration requirement.
Well, just because it has no license, no thing attached to it, that was the only...
Right. And I guess what I heard was there was a desire to move forward and get this adopted.
Mm-hmm.
And so, but if you want to try and craft a registration requirement now and build it into it, we could try. It's just a little complicated. I'd pull up the code and figure out where we're going to put it and...
That's fine, because I think it will probably be brought up with the chickens, too, so maybe we can do the same.
Want to do it tonight?
No, I mean, we can, come back, yep.
I don't want to do it tonight. Sure.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion, and then we're going to have a separate thing to address the registration.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, so basically, they're canceling the amendment, withdrawing the amendment.
I think that's what I would suggest.
Are you guys okay with that?
Sure, as long as we get to it.
All right, well, it'll be the next item, then. All right, so we're going to the original motion with the amendment on there about the, with the language change that we had discussed earlier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So you want to do this now, or do you want to do it in coordination with the chickens?
Why don't we do the chicken item, and then we can do the vote on whether you want to direct us to put together a registration requirement?
Okay, so ordinance 13 of 2019 also comes from the Planning Commission. All the person Bartlet?
Ordinance 13 of 2019.
It's our first reading also.
Yeah. Amendment in Sections 14-461 and 78-206, par eight, par Y, and Chapter 78, Appendix C, relating to accessory uses and structures in keeping of chickens, regulations of animals, and it is the first reading.
Any questions on this? Otherwise, it'll come back unless you want to waive the rules and move forward on this one.
We have to waive the rules in order to address...
You would have to waive the rules.
Yeah, we still have to make the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to waive the rules.
Second.
And a second by Boersma. Any questions about waiving the rules, so we can take action on this tonight? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Before you vote on this, the only thing that this ordinance does...
Increases the number of chickens.
Is repeal the licensing requirement for chickens, I think.
Yep.
And so, if you want to keep a licensing requirement, you could just vote this down. I think that is really the only thing this does. Rodney, do you remember if that's correct? It's the only thing I see going on here.
That is the principal use, yep.
So if you, unless you want to do something other than, I mean, the licensing requirement is essentially, this is an annual license, so unless you want to do something different from that, you want to require an annual license?
Or if you're talking about just registering them?
You want just a one-time registration, and then, then, then that's different from this.
So I guess the motion right now is to waive the rules. We can vote on that and then figure out what we want to do with the item that's on the agenda, whether or not we want to vote it down, keep it the same, or change it. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So we're back to the, to the motion as described by the city attorney. Does somebody want to make a, do we want to look to approve that, or do we want to amend that to make it strictly registration and then add the bees in as well, or what would you guys like to do?
We need to make the motion to approve, so that if anybody wants to make an amendment to it.
I can't hear you.
We need to make a motion to approve.
Then any amendments can be made.
Okay, you want to do that?
I would make that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve.
A second.
And a second by President Mieske. So now would be the, either the time for discussion or for an amendment. All the person Hirsch?
I guess I have a question for Rodney, or whoever oversees this. So if somebody decides they have chickens, and now there's six as opposed to four, who's making sure that those structures are in compliance with our ordinance that we passed just a few weeks ago? Would that be nobody, then?
Nobody, unless there's an issue that's raised to our attention. Then we go out and inspect them.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's, can I ask, in your experience, how compliant people are with creating appropriate structures?
Some are very good, some aren't so good. I mean, you get the whole gamut. Some will come in with a sketch on a napkin, some will come with a detailed plan, and some will come with a detailed plan and not put on their lot what they planned. So we run the gamut. There's a lot of administration time in monitoring and inspecting and evaluating these. For these is, and I'd expect the same for bees. I don't know that the number of bees will approach the number of chicken locations. I think the chicken locations that we have now are compliant and have been brought into compliance. So it's an education process, and like I said, some are more, more apt to receive the education, others go about it in their own way.
So if we vote for this, that education process goes away?
There's a number of ordinances that are on the books that don't receive day-to-day guidance and counsel for installation of things.
Right, but usually those don't entail living organisms that we're supposed to be in charge of.
Just so you know, we're not skilled to check the health of bees or chickens. We're identifying the parameters for their location and the zoning aspects of the conditions that are outlined in the ordinance.
No, I realize that, but there are some certain structures that, dimensions that are supposed to be adhered to.
Understood.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm not actually asking you guys to be veterinarians or anything like that. But it's this, I guess I have a problem when there's no oversight.
Can I just, you know, because we're going to be probably having to draft something to deal with registration, if that's the direction the council wants to go. I mean, I'm going to need some direction on how much oversight you want. You could have a requirement which is simply, tell us if you have chickens, or tell us if you have bees, period. Or we could step it up to, we want a permit application where you sketch out your property and what you're going to build, and so we can verify that what you're showing us on paper corresponds to what our ordinance says. Or we could go beyond that and say, we want to see it on paper and verify that that's corresponds to ordinance, and then we're going to send somebody else to check, somebody out to check after you put it in. So this is the direction we need from you all as to how much, what do you want? Because I can draft it any way you want, I just need to know what you want.
But isn't that what we already have, so we're voting?
Right now, with the licensing process we have, my guess is the way it's administered now is, somebody has to at least show a sketch of what they plan to do with respect to the chickens. It comes in, and somebody administratively at the staff looks at it and says, "Yeah, that looks like it meets our code."
And visits the site.
They do visit the site as well? Oh, and then they're going out and they visit the site.
Absolutely, follows up after installation.
That's what we're doing now, for chickens.
All the person Boersma?
I used to keep bees and I used to keep chickens when I was on the farm. And we had, and especially for bees, it was a self-regulation, regulating thing. And basically, we went to, to learn about bees and how to do it and all that. It was, it wasn't regulated by the government. It was, it was a consortium of people who got together and helped each other out in that situation. I think we need to encourage that, rather than having all these things. We don't know, we don't know much about bees. Actually, we don't know a lot about chickens. I think, I think that's the best route to go, is to have it be self-regulating and helping, like a group that helps other people in learning how to do it and all that. I think that's a better route to go than us regulating this to the nth degree.
President Mieske?
Rodney, how many man-hours a year are you putting into, into the requirements for chicken?
I would bet each license probably is in the four to five hours per renewal.
And how many do we have currently?
Twenty-some.
So 80 hours?
Yeah, roughly. I mean, council will recall, our department requested additional staff. We are more than happy to do these type of activities, but we are, we are thin, and it's problematic for us to balance all the, all the demands out there right now.
All the person Hirsch?
So is it 80 hours a year, but if they already have a license, so you, they have to re-license every year?
Yes, they renew.
So they have to recheck everything every year, even though things are, stay the same?
In theory, they stay the same. In practice, that might not be the case. So that's why they're, they're evaluated annually.
And I guess I had a comment, yes, said that would be a nice place to go, but not everybody has that. Most people go to the internet to get their education these days.
It may have changed.
It has changed. And I guess I'm just wanting to keep our public safety and the animals safe that's in it. So I, I don't want to take up the time, but I also don't want to...
So we're in on a motion.
Create a problem either.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out how best to solve this.
Well, I guess, you know, you have an option. If you want to keep it as is, you can approve the ordinance. If you want to amend it, you could, you could send it back to committee. There's a few different options here. Might be a little difficult to send it back to committee when we've just approved, I mean, chickens is really the only thing we're talking about now, but if you wanted to include the bees, I don't know if you want to send it back to committee when we just approved having the bees, so I guess it's up to you guys.
Well, this is just the chicken ordinance.
Right.
It's, has nothing to do with bees, so...
No, but we were talking about maybe including the same process for registration of the bees, but we haven't got to that point yet, so it's up to you guys. All the person Johnson?
I guess, thank you, Your Honor. I think we're overthinking the process here. This, this was through the Planning Commission. We discussed it at some length. I was totally comfortable with, with the process that we had set up. And again, I, I just think we, we don't really need to take that step. And I do understand the concern, but we also have to look at Rodney's department, what they have the capacity to do. Welfare of the animals, I think, is going to be well taken care of by the people that own them. They want, they want to take care of these animals. They want the eggs, they want the honey. And it would be in their best interest to take care of these animals. So I'm, I'm totally comfortable with, with what we have come up with here, and I would encourage people to follow suit.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we do have a motion to approve the ordinance 13, 2019, as presented. All the person Hirsch?
So again, if we vote yes for this, we have no idea how many chickens are in our neighborhoods as opposed to everybody has to have a dog license, and we have no idea if there's a problem, what to, how to handle it.
You can handle that after we vote on this, with the directions that we're going for. Which direction to the staff?
I can't hear you. Sorry.
You can, you can handle that by direction to staff after this vote.
For the registration.
Okay. I just want everybody to be clear, if we vote yes for this, there's no registration unless we go forward. Okay?
All the person Haley?
So if there was a problem that arose with chickens, if we pass this, it would be complaint-based. We'd still enforce the code as, minus the, minus the registration, and likely the complaint would, would be localized. They would say, "My neighbor has, has these chickens," and you don't have like the, the roaming swarms of chickens happening, but...
Big flaps.
Not yet.
So I don't, I don't think it's exactly one-to-one in what we're thinking, but...
Anybody else? Last chance. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
So I guess the question is, does, I need some direction from the council. Do you want me to develop a registration requirement? And do you want it to just be a one, if so, do you want it to be just a one-time registration, or do you want it to be an annual kind of renewal? So that, and I guess my concern with the one-time registration is that if, if it's only a one-time registration, somebody registers once, eventually that list will no longer be an accurate list, because, you know, people will register, and then three years later, they don't have chickens anymore, but they're still on the list. So if you want to have a list that is accurate, you're going to have to require kind of annual registration. It doesn't have to be the kind of licensing process that we've been using, where we do inspections and all of that. It could just simply be, you just have to notify the city on an annual basis. And then, if we're going to do something like that, the way you typically structure that is, you have to register, and if you don't, you're violating the ordinance, and if we catch you, you're going to get cited. That, that would be the idea.
And then, who do they register with?
Probably the city clerk, same way we do for dog and cat licenses.
Okay, there's an old cat.
Or a dog.
Don't start that.
Don't give me any ideas.
No cat licenses. Not today, not after that, well.
So I see a couple hands up over here.
I was just going to ask, Holly, then, would you then send out a notice to the people who have registered the previous year to say, "Do you still have chickens, please?" You know, like we do with dogs.
I think so. Currently, we do that with chickens. We have a licensing software that we can just generate a notice and send that out to everyone that we have on file.
So there would be...
I mean, if that's what you, I mean, that could be part of the policy that you guys come up with, but I mean, that's what we currently do.
All the person Boersma?
And then, this is going to have to be, we're going to have to inform people if they have chickens that they're going to, we need the initial one, too, the initial registration.
We have the initial...
Right now, you have a licensing requirement.
Yeah.
So this would be, if we change it to registration or modification of the current process, they're already licensed, they just have to comply with whatever the new process is going forward.
And the new people will have to register.
The new people would have to turn up, yeah.
And would this go to CACP or the planning, or would we do this work? I mean, you would probably draft something and send it to a committee?
I would draft something and probably work with Holly and Michael to figure out where to go with it.
Okay. Is that what you want us to do?
No.
No.
No. If, if you're concerned about, if we are concerned about regulations and ensuring that the welfare of livestock is, is kept correctly, we could do, instead of an annual, we could do a every third year or five-year inspection, just to keep, just to keep insurances that the ordinance is being kept to. It's a suggestion.
So, and I would say that you can do something like that, you don't have to do that in the ordinance. That could be a policy.
Right.
So the ordinance should, could, could basically require registration or licensing, and then city could, as a matter of policy, decide how often you want your people out there inspecting. Do you want to do it, you do want to inspect everyone every year, or divide it into three years, or that's...
Even years, odd years. The, the challenge is, is if you do it every three or five years, then not everybody is, enters into the program at the same time, and the software sometimes has difficulty with that. Because I know there was an effort at the state level to do that with dogs. Because I know there was an effort at the state level to do that with dogs, and what I was, what I heard at our meetings was that the software wouldn't always accommodate that, so you'd have to do it manually, and then that's when errors would occur. But we could do something, probably in-house. There's not that many of them here, we're a small city. Go ahead.
Well, I think you register every year, so that's the same software, so that's not a thing.
Right.
They get a renewal every year. And I, like, that was sort of what I was thinking, is that you do a lottery every year, and you pick out three. Three people out of that list get inspected.
Sort of like a random?
Yeah, random. And then when people register, they know that, you know, there'll be random checks.
Mm-hmm.
Alderson Reeves.
So that policy, though, needs to go back to a committee, right? And we're just talking about where?
Yeah. Yeah, we're just looking for some direction on what we would want to take back.
Planning seems to, I mean, since it originated there, unless someone else has another, I would move to send it to planning as a, if we want to look at a policy, if that's the recommendation.
Policy, or is it CACP, or where does it go? Where does it go?
Either one. We'll get it somewhere.
If you're on CACP, maybe you, yeah. I don't have a preference, really.
I would say CACP.
CACP? Is that all right? And do we have enough direction?
Well, here's what my notes say. One, develop an ordinance that requires annual registration of chickens and/or bees. And then, two, a committee may choose to consider developing some kind of internal policy on how and when to inspect.
All right. That sounds like direction to me, so I, I don't think we need to go any further on this one, do we? All right, we'll move on then to R fifty-seven of two thousand and nineteen.
I did have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a constituent ask about the, the notification in, in the paper, and when the ordinance on the bees would become legal.
And so I will send the ordinance to the hub this week, and it won't be published until next Thursday.
So it will be legal as of next Thursday?
As of next Thursday.
As of the day after next Thursday. Effective the day after publication.
Yep, day after publication.
Friday.
Friday.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So R fifty-seven is approving extraterritorial jurisdiction for land division requests by Elizabeth Reinstedt for property located at nineteen twenty-four, County Highway A, Town of Dunkirk, Dane County. This came from the Planning Commission. Alderson Bartlett.
It's on your packet, I think Director Shields bringing up the map. This is a property, I think, a mile and a half or so outside of our, outside of the city, but it's within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. They want to break off the farm, the houses from the farmland. Anything else? Director Shields?
Can you maybe just take a moment and explain, especially to the new council members, what extraterritorial jurisdiction is all about?
Yes. ETJ, otherwise known as extraterritorial jurisdiction, allows cities our size to exercise some influence and control over land divisions within a mile and a half of the city limits. We have established criteria to evaluate those land splits, if you will, outside of the city limits. Generally, we've, we've been pretty accommodating to honor the wishes of the township in which they're in and the county standards. We have a standard that allows for the maximum lot size of the said lots to be two and a half acres, but there is an exception that allows for them to be larger. And again, generally, we're consistently approving them based on the town and the county's approval, if they are not within our short-term growth boundaries. As indicated in this particular situation, this one's about a mile and a half beyond, or, or within our mile and a half, but not adjacent to our boundary, our current boundary, and therefore doesn't seem like it would create an issue for orderly growth beyond the city limits in the future.
Okay. Did you have something you want to add?
I would just add to that, that if, if we're ever faced with a situation where we are concerned about, where we may, where, where the council may be concerned about approving an ETJ land division, we'll have to look very carefully at what, what the legal basis is for denial, because the courts have been narrowing the scope of our ETJ authority. It's fairly limited scope of reasons that we could legitimately offer at this point to say no.
And then, did you make a motion? I forgot to ask you.
Motion approved.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Second by Reeves. Okay. Alderson Jensen, did you?
I was going to make the motion.
Oh, okay. So I have a motion and a second by Bartlett, and these also have to be approved by the township and the county as well, right? Okay. And I don't know if they've done that already in this particular one or not, but.
In most cases, they have by the time they've gotten here.
Okay, we're usually last. Okay, any questions on this? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Resolution fifty-eight is another one, two thousand and nineteen, from the Planning Commission. Alderson Bartlett.
Start the motion approved. You already read the resolution, pretty much.
Yeah, the address on this one is fourteen ninety-four Pleasant Hill Road in the Town of Dunkirk.
I'll second.
Second by Jensen. Any question on this one? Anything you want to add for this one, Rodney?
It's kind of an irregular lot shape, but you can see the rationale for the, the irregularity in trying to split those, the land into these separate parcels. It is larger than a two and a half acres, but it, it does not seem to create an issue with our short-term growth boundary, so we're recommending approval.
No questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Resolution fifty-nine of two thousand and nineteen. This one comes from the Finance Committee earlier this evening. Alderson Schumacher.
Resolution fifty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, looking for approval of submission of an award application for the Public Works Garage site property by the Director of Finance Comptroller for WHAM Contractor Services.
I'll second.
That's a motion, and a second by Jensen.
And let us talk about WHAM.
That would be Finance Director Freedom.
Let us, let us not use an acronym when we're doing these.
WHAM stands for Wisconsin Assessment Monies.
Thank you.
And this would just be money available for the phase-two assessment.
Any questions or any other comments on this one? Okay, here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Thank you. Resolution sixty of two thousand and nineteen. This one came through Finance and Park and Rec. Director Glenn is here. Who wants to introduce this one? Either Regina or Brett? Doesn't really matter. It's for the soil samples.
I can do it.
Okay.
Introducing R sixty dash two oh, two thousand and nineteen, approving professional services agreement with Interflu for Yahrar River sediment sampling services. And I, so move.
Second.
Second by Alderson Reeves. Did you have any background on this one, Regina, or you want to turn it over to Dan or both?
This is a part of, and I'll start it, and then Dan can chime in. This is part of gearing up for the Whitewater Park, is that we need to contract a company to do sediment sampling in the river above and below the dam to make sure there's no contaminants. And we had, Dan wrote our proposal, our RFP, and we got a number of responses, and they went through, well, I'll let Dan tell you how they went through and decided on Interflu.
Sure. So there are seven proposals back from the RFP, and we went through, and what we did is really, it was hard to have an apples-to-apples comparison, because they all have a different style of how they want to do the sediment sampling and the survey, which is included in the sampling program, because, so what we really did is we split off the lab costs from the actual service of that was being provided by the consultant. The lab costs are passed on to us, and it's just actually the lab fees, so there's no markup based on the consultant. So the consultant's work is really developing a sediment, or a, yeah, sediment sampling plan, conducting a bathymetric survey, and completing a report for us. They'll let us know exactly how much it would cost to manage that sediment or dispose of it. So we, we selected four different proposals to interview, and it was based on the three low bids plus Interflu. And we selected Interflu because I had multiple meetings with them. They're out of Madison, they have, they've done work with the RDA, and they're just really in tune with actual river. So moving forward with them, we asked them about their, you know, the survey, how they're going to do it, and we thought, our committee, which consisted of Director Shields, Director Abair, and myself, we really, we believed it was important that the consultant that we hired can move on and do additional work as we move forward with the project. And what that means is possible dam removal or riverbank rest, or river restoration projects. And so Strand was one of the three low bids, so they, they don't do much beyond the scope of the actual sediment sampling that was in the RFP. So we eliminated them based on that. So that left us with Interflu, Grafe, and Ayers Associates. Interflu had the most detailed bathymetric survey, which included ten transects of the river, and it's important to have a very good bathymetric survey, because it can be used, number one, for the Whitewater Park. That's part of the engineering, that the engineer would need to be, be done for that part, but also it gives us a better estimate of the volume of sediment in the river. And having that information will let us know a better idea of what the cost is to be managers or dispose of that sediment. Also, Interflu had communicated with the DNR just based on their background of the project, and they had a more detailed sampling plan, where they collected twenty samples, compared to Grafe who had eight and Ayers who had eighteen. And what it clearly comes down is to the cost. There wasn't much difference between Interflu and Grafe, who was a low bid. Interflu was eighteen thousand two hundred, and Grafe was fifteen thousand two fifty. The three thousand dollar difference gives us a lot more detailed work, and a company that's also local to the area where we can, they can do site visits and other things. So.
Alderson Reeves.
So the lab tests, looks like they're pretty expensive, and do you have any guesstimate on how many they think they might be doing and where the funds would come from for that?
Yeah, they, they thought that twenty would be a good number, but it really comes down to what the DNR wants them to do. So they'll have a meeting, they'll develop a preliminary sampling plan and present it to the DNR, and then the DNR really has the final call on how much, you know, samples will be collected, and also what the sediment will be tested for. And that's the real big cost variance. You know, a sample could range anywhere between four hundred to fourteen hundred dollars per sample. We have roughly eighty-eight, or eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars budgeted for Whitewater Park engineering this, this year. And the other part that we need to do is the next stage of the Whitewater Park engineering. It would be a sixty percent preliminary design, and then also the hydraulic and hydrological survey, or analyses, I'm sorry. And that cost is fifty thousand five hundred. It's the cost estimate I got for that. So we really have thirty-eight thousand dollars to do the sediment sampling, uh, plan and the testing. So, you know, it could be a little bit more, it could be a little, it could be a little less. It's hard to say at this point without a meeting with the DNR.
Alderson Riley, and then Borzma.
Thank you. Could you just give me a definition of bathymetric survey? I'm educated as to what that is.
Sure. So it's, it's like a, it's like a topographical map of the river. So what they'll do is they'll probe down with, they almost look like pipes, and they can tell what the natural river bottom is, because it's either gravel or sand, it's a different composition than the soft sediment. And the transects are like across the river, so they'll, they'll do the probing, you know, through the transects, and they'll know exactly what the right, the real river bottom is.
Thank you.
Alderson Borzma.
This was voted four to one, one against, and is that person here tonight, the one voted against? I'm not hearing anyone. All right.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and nineteen also comes from Park and Rec. Alderson Hirsch.
Introducing R sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the smittle of the Wisconsin DNR Department of Natural Resources, stewardship fund grant application by the Park and Rec Director for the Yahrar River Riverfront Development Project, Phase One, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alderson Reeves. Alderson Hirsch.
This is, last year, we put in a big grant for the Whitewater Park that included trails and the actual structures for the Whitewater Park. And even though Dan wrote a fantastic proposal, and we scored the highest in the state, the DNR decided not to fund us, because it was, I, I think our project was too big in, in scale, and they had never funded a Whitewater Park before. And during their meetings, they were talking about maybe phase it in and do a little bit by a little bit. So this is exactly what Dan has done. Our first phase for this Whitewater Park is actually looking at the trail system and a sta, bank stabilization and get some access points for kayaks and canoes into the lower part of the river, and to put that pedestrian bridge that would connect Mapp Park to the RDA site. And, yeah, Dan, what else do you want to say about? It's, it's a-
I think you covered most of it. I mean, the, the phasing in is just to make sure that, I think we do this additional engineering work, like I just mentioned previously, and it's just given us more time to do that for the actual Whitewater Park, and that's what the DNR was mostly concerned about. So by phasing in, it extends our timeline to do the additional engineering work this year.
And it gives us, we're actually moving forward, you know, so we're, we're moving, getting things done.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this, or how it works, or anything? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. R sixty-two of two thousand and nineteen comes from myself. I'm looking for a motion for two appointments to the Library Board, and those appointments would be, as recommended from the library, would be Amy Ketterer and Tom Seltzer.
I move for approval.
A second.
There's a motion by Borzma, a second by Legaki. Any conversation or questions on that? I'm hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action on cost reimbursement agreement related to Kettle Park West North Edition. Planning Director Shields, would you like to start this one?
We've been working under a cost reimbursement or an agreement that dates way back to the annexation of property, and known as Kettle Park West. Our conversations about the next phases led us to think that we should freshen that up and have a new cost recovery agreement put in place. This is, has been drafted by City Attorney Dregney with that intention in mind.
And you'll notice that on the agenda, we have it posted, where if we start having a conversation that gets into an area of negotiation, we would have an opportunity to go into closed session on this item and the next item. And I trust Attorney Dregney will let us know when we've come near the line if we need to go into closed session. At this point, I don't think we need to, but we would open it up for any questions or, or comments about the, the consideration in action. So we're looking for a motion to accept this. Is that? Motion approved.
No proof.
I would move to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Reeves and a second by, I think it was Johnson. And then any other further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And then item 14 is consideration and possible action regarding Kettle Park West North Edition intersection at Oak Opening Drive, State Highway 138, and the extension of Oak Opening Drive in the town of Rutland. Planning Director Scheel can start this. We do have a couple people here from Forward Development Group if we have any questions. I'm sure they'll be more than happy to come up and answer them. Go ahead Rodney.
City Attorney Dregney and I worked together to formulate this memo, so I think we'll tag team a little bit on, on the contents thereof. But I think this offers an opportunity to give a little bit of background of where we've, we've come over the time, and I'm not going to give, I'm going to give a very abbreviated session of the Kettle Park West development. But for those that would like more detail, I'm certainly available outside of the council sessions to help you or understand questions you might have. The picture on the screen illustrates the Kettle Park West development on the south side, or the bottom of the page is Highway 138. Along the right-hand side is Highway 51. The commercial center in this general location, the bottom right-hand corner encompasses the Walmart facility, McFarland State Bank, QuickTrip, and the like in this general area. In 2016, the city actually took action on a preliminary plat that outlined the balance of this area as part of future development. It enumerated these sections, A, B, C, D, and E, and anticipating final plating of one or more of those sections at a time. Section A was the first final plat that was submitted following the commercial center, and that encompasses the senior housing development that's under construction right now. This hospitality lot that's anticipated to have the True By Hilton Hotel, and that proceeded to implement the final plat for that location. The preliminary plat that approved this entire area enumerated a number of significant conditions, or a number of conditions, not all significant, but all conditions that would need to be satisfied prior to plating of an area, any area within this, this section. A number of them are going to talk very specifically, but what's prompting the discussion at this point is their interest in essentially final plating this very northern portion of residential, along with Oak Opening Drive to the Northern Point, as shown here, and continuing down to an area approximately here. Section E is also included in a certified survey map that they've submitted for consideration at the same time. The community is also in a situation where the, I'll call it the internal area of this platted, or preliminary platted area, is open for consideration as a comprehensive plan amendment. You'll recognize this indicates a park area, and these larger lots here were, I believe there are 64 unit multifamily units proposed on these parcels here. So not necessarily subject of the discussion tonight, but their intent is to seek modification to this to essentially remove the multifamily development here and create a variation of single-family housing that the Planning Commission was introduced to last night as part of the Public Participation Plan Event. So, in one of the conditions for approval of plats within this area, it required the city to identify, or the city to obtain satisfaction of a connection to Highway, to Highway 138 from Oak Opening Drive. The city, in utilizing development participation, worked with the town of Rutland and the state to put in place a memorandum of understanding that outlines the conditions in which this physical connection can actually be made to State Highway 138. We've outlined in our memo a number of things that we think are options to consider whether we're satisfying that condition or not. And Matt, are you able to walk through those conditions as outlined in the memo?
Sure.
Take it from there.
Okay. So, the final plat that's been proposed shows Oak Opening Drive being dedicated down to where Rodney's indicating. It doesn't continue then all the way to 138. So the proposal, what we're seeing is a plat that's going to be coming before you that would not actually make the connection to 138. We do have an MOU that's been approved by the city, the DOT, and the developer that, as Rodney said, describes what the DOT would approve as a connection at that location. So, we think the council has a number of options that it could consider in deciding what to do at this stage about this issue. One possibility would be for the council to decide that the issue of the connection of Oak Opening Drive to 138 has been addressed to its satisfaction through the MOU and that nothing else would be required, at least with respect to that intersection, to allow the developer to move forward with final plating this area. I did indicate in the memo that if that were the council's decision, then the city would not be in a position to require the developer to participate financially in, in making that intersection happen. It's not clear what the impact of that decision would be, in part because I think there are going to be more changes to this plat that are being proposed. And so there may be an opportunity to do something at that point. But what, what I said in the memo is that if the council wants to preserve the opportunity to require the developer to participate financially in putting that intersection in, either as part of this phase that they're wanting to move forward with now, that northern area, or at some future phase, then I wouldn't recommend this particular option, the option of saying you're satisfied. Another option would be to, a second option I've outlined would be to allow the North Edition phase to proceed without requiring the intersection to be constructed as part of that phase, but reserving the right to condition approval of future phases on construction of that intersection. A third option would be to require that the intersection be constructed as part of this North Edition phase, and attempt to negotiate an agreement that accomplishes that objective in connection with approving this North Edition phase. A fourth option would be to disapprove the North Edition plat altogether until the developer obtains approval of a new preliminary plat that includes the kinds of changes that are under discussion now, and defer a decision on the Highway 138 intersection until, until you see what the rest of the plat's going to look like. Those were the, what I thought were the most significant options that I could identify. There may be variations of those, there may be other options I didn't think of, but those were the biggies that, that I thought were available. And at least from my perspective, given that we're on a path towards, it looks like we're on a path towards having to make a decision about what to do with that North Edition final plat, we, we would find it helpful at a staff level and have direction from the council about how you want to deal with that intersection issue so we can be, we can prepare appropriately for that, for that decision.
Other person Hirsch and then Riley.
It is kind of hard to make a decision when we know that it is changing dramatically from what is presented here. Historically, why we, the council, which maybe one person is here, two, three, from before then, it's a public safety issue. If you go back to there, this is what the council thinking was in 2016, is that you have houses all the way down there, but there wasn't, it wasn't wide enough for necessarily a fire truck to be able to turn around. There was only one entrance into this whole development, which was at the, going through the Walmart intersection, Jackson Street. And so, at that time, when it was fully built, we said we needed, not only Jackson Street for public safety reasons and to get in, we needed Oak Opening to 138, but also Oak Opening all the way to Robie Road. So people, there is a traffic congestion, even though they say their traffic study wouldn't happen, but if you build 300-plus houses in there, it's going to be probably a little congested at nine in the morning or eight in the morning. And so that's why at that time, the council was really, really strongly recommending that we have Oak Opening to the south so people can get out and go to Oregon, or, and to have it going up to Robie Road along, widening that road along with a bike path so they have other options. So, that, I guess I still would like to see that as it maybe, that doesn't have to go all the way to 138 initially until there's a percentage of the construction in the northern end that has been met, like half the construction is met, and then they have to have the, the road all the way to 138. But I would not recommend that we diminish it going up to Robie Road. I think we need at least two entrances for public safety to get into that new subdivision.
Can I briefly, the, the next section of the memo talks about that extension of Oak Opening Drive up to Deer Point and over to 51. And that, yes, that was an additional condition that the council attached, that there needed to be an agreement by the town and the city that would address the improvement of those roads. And so my understanding is the developer has asked the city to move forward with attempting to negotiate an agreement with the town of Rutland that would get that done. My understanding is the town has been supportive of the project, but is not itself going to want to pay for any of the work. And my understanding is the developer will be requesting that the city use TIF funds to pay for that. So the question that the memo asks the council in terms of direction is, is the council supportive of using TIF funds to finance the extension of Oak Opening Drive up to Deer Point and then to 51 or not? Because if not, then we'll have to let the developer know that we don't have a TIF funding option for that.
Can you clarify, is it just all the way down to 138?
Well, so my-
Or is it just at 138 that they're wanting TIF because?
Well, we haven't seen their TIF request yet, but my understanding is, from talking to Rodney, who I think maybe has had some conversation with them, is that the developer will be seeking TIF funding for the extension of Oak Opening Drive north into the town of Rutland and all the public improvements in the town of Rutland and over to 51, number one. Number two, I think the developer's expecting TIF to pay for the eventual improvement of the intersection of Oak Opening Drive and 138. But the developer's request is that that project be deferred until a future date, and their position is there will be TIF funding available that could be used to pay for that, and that's going to be their proposal, I believe. And I'm not sure, but there may be other elements of TIF that are requested, but I'm not sure, because I haven't, we haven't seen their actual proposal yet.
Other person Riley.
Thank you. One, Councilperson Hirsch answered some questions I had because I wasn't on the council when this is all being contemplated, so I appreciate that. With respect to what would allow, it seems to me that option B would allow the developer to move forward with some of what we're looking to have done, and we could reserve our options with respect to Oak Opening Drive and et cetera in the future, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And North Edition, and the North Edition phase again is the hotel and the senior center, am I right?
No, the North Edition is single-family housing, it's up there. That's it.
So the hotel is, hotel senior housing is in this general area along Jackson Street?
That was part of Phase One.
That's taken, gotcha, thank you.
This is Phase Two.
Okay. All right, good, thanks. That answers my questions as to what I would like to recommend.
Other person Lagaki.
Just a question of trying to understand the motivation of why, I just don't have enough history, the north entry to 151 and Deer Point is being seen as so separate from the entry to 138 for this road. Why are they wanting to hesitate or put it off? Do we have any ideas as to why they don't want to address that now?
Which one?
The southern 138.
So my understanding, and well, maybe Rodney wants to speak to that.
There's, there's a number of factors involved here, but there is not imminent development to the south. There is a belief that there might be a need at some point to have this potentially be a roundabout at, at this intersection with Oak Opening Drive if development to the south was to occur. So the timing of when this connection, I, I don't think there's debate about whether this connection would be made. It's about when it should be improved.
And what it would look like.
And what it would look like. As you've driven out here, I know, I'm sure you've seen the large water body, and you can see that it was, it's in a kettle. So there's a great deal of grade issues that would be about, associated with installation of and construction of Oak Opening at that connection. Even if you wanted to just have a ride-in, ride-out, there's a significant investment in making that, that happen. So, I'm not trying to present their case, I'm presenting some of the topographic issues and constructibility issues out here.
I appreciate that, and I noticed there's some gentleman who might also want to speak to that.
Sure, and, and part of the, the option there is, we have approval from the DOT to do a ride-in, ride-out, or if we wait and it times out right and the traffic would, would justify it, we could reinvest in the roundabout. So the question is, is would we want to put something in now, or would we wait and wait and see if we'd be better off just spending the money once on the roundabout versus twice by spending money now on the ride-in, ride-out, and then again later on on the roundabout? So those are the types of questions that we're kind of struggling with right now. And the traffic, the traffic is really projected to be less now than it was in the original plan, because the original plan, as Rodney mentioned, had four of the 60-some unit, multi-units in there, and what they're proposing now is a single-family home, so there's going to be basically 200 less dwellings than originally proposed, which means there'll be less traffic. So we don't really feel the need. From a public safety point of view, I can tell you that I physically drove, and then I went on some mapping, and I mapped it out, measured it, and timed it. And the difference between going through where the proposed roundabout is on 151 up through to the end of Jackson, and then, or if you were to go north and take Deer Point to Oak Opening when it's constructed and go down to the same spot on Jackson, or if you were to go down 138 and up the proposed road up on Jackson, there's about, well, I'm driving the speed limit, so it's probably about 45 seconds to a minute. The fire chief also drove it, and when they drive it, if they were to drive it with the lights on, they could probably, the difference would probably be 30 seconds, give or take a little bit. So for a public safety point of view, I know at least the fire chief is, is comfortable with, with Oak Opening, Deer Point, as well as the Jackson entrances from a public safety standpoint. And I don't know if the chief has anything to add to that from your perspective.
Well, not quite the same. I would be a little more concerned about all that traffic coming onto Jackson Street, especially considering the configuration of the lights there. Any more traffic that that area is going to cause significant issues going forward just because of the way it's set up with Halt's Road there and the, the traffic light configuration, you're going to have lots of backup. I would be much more comfortable with one or the other, either the northern route or the southern route, but more than likely, I think the northern route is much better to have that opening to, Oak Opening to Deer Point and, and out that way. I think to Robie Road, especially considering in 2021, we're supposed to be getting the roundabout at Robie Road, help alleviate some of that traffic, and they can bypass that Jackson Street intersection.
Okay. I'll let Ron introduce himself, and then we'll go to other person Riley and Boersma. I want you to-
I want you to introduce yourself to the new members here.
All right, thank you. Ron Hinchu from Ford Development Group. I'm Ford Development Group's CFO and Vice President of Operations. Dennis Steinkrauss, who's the entitlement manager for this project, is out of town this evening, so he asked if I would step in and try to answer any questions for you. Excuse me. I want to just highlight or follow up on, there's a lot of history here. And for those of you that are newer alders, we'd be happy to meet with you anytime to discuss any of the information and provide our perspective on it. But I want to address a couple of things that have been said. First of all, we are in full support of the connection to 138, so it doesn't have anything to do with us not wanting that connection. It's just a function of time when that should occur, which is why we haven't shown the connection at this point in time. The connection to the north would be made in this first phase, which would provide those two outlets now. Just to talk a little bit about the lay of the land that Rodney spoke of earlier, you can drive by 138 and where that Oak Opening Drive connection would be and see that it's somewhere in excess of a 20-foot drop-off at this point in time. So, that's, to get that built, we need to move on this project from the north to the south. So, there's a logic as to why that first phase and that north addition is the area that we're tackling. That's where a significant amount of the cuts are coming that will start to provide fill to move toward that. So, even in the first phase, we'll be moving all that material to the south as we move to the south to create that connection. So, at this point in time, that's, you know, the logic behind how you progress on a project. So, we understand that would be built, it just, in our opinion, is not needed at this point in time, and should be made when more information is available. Okay? That being said, as we took a look, I think staff, Matt did a great job of laying out the options as it relates to how to proceed forward. We intended and worked hard and actually, I believe, took the lead in getting that MOU developed between the states such that we know that that connection will be allowed. But, so, we would be happy with item A, which I think is less likely to get approved by the council based on our experience. But more importantly, B, we're satisfied with the, you know, reserve the right to discuss it at a later date. We plan on doing it. Three, doesn't work financially, I can tell you that, to try to say that needs to be built now, that just is not economically possible. We would, four, as well, we'd like you to approve the north addition, knowing the reason why we're doing that north addition, we're trying to get in construction this year. That piece is in accordance with the approved plan, so we can start that. We're going to follow. I think you, most of you, other than the new alders, have seen what we're proposing. We've worked with city staff. We presented a number of times how we're looking at the single-family area, and we're going to follow with the comp plan amendment that hopefully allows the single-family, and that will be a, it'll fill in the missing pieces within maybe 60 days. So, from Jackson Street to Oak Opening Drive, there'll be more single-family that's done at that point in time. But we have to start by getting this piece approved, because then we could start in construction sooner rather than later, and then near the end of the construction period, we'd fill in those other lots. So, it allows us to get moving. We want to get this development going, so it brings in new residents to the city. Okay? I had one other point that I wanted to make. Oh, I think Regina, you said some 300 housing units. It's actually based on the changes that were made, we're at 195 housing units.
Okay.
So, it's a big difference from the original one that was proposed. So, and that is going to have, from the original TIA that we did, that everything was based on, there'll be somewhere in the area of 15% to 20% less traffic coming out of the development than the plan that was presented to you a year or so ago.
I had Alder Person Riley, Borisma, and then Hirsch. Is that okay?
Thank you. May I ask a question?
You sure can.
Thanks. With respect to proceeding with the north addition phase, would that, if I understand what you said, include starting to try to work on this access from 51?
Yes, the connection would be made to Deer Point.
And the, and I guess I'll jump back to Regina if I may. The various concerns you expressed with respect to safety issues aren't really impacted immediately with respect to allowing them proceed with the north addition, am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Good, thanks. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Alder Person Borisma?
Yeah, I attended the hearing, or the meeting last night. It was a public, open session, and you had talked about the fact that it's your intention, every intention that you have to create eventually an opening, Oak Opening to Highway 138. But that, that you would defer that because, one, we don't know whether or not we would continue with the ride-in, ride-out, or if we would directly to, when we need that, a roundabout. And so, I was, I was not aware about how much fill that would take to be able to make that, I think, 20-foot height and all the things that need to be handled around that whole brim of the, of the water, that little lake.
Current cattle, yeah.
So, you know, I think that there was, one of my concerns last night was that, you know, the construction of that particular piece of, that parcel, when we have a lot of houses or residences in there already, that that would disrupt whoever's living there at that point. That was one of my concerns, and whether or not you'd want a project that would, that would be kind of less adequate than doing it all at once. And the issue is really money. It's not the fact that you don't want to do it, but it is money. Is that correct?
That's correct. And when you take a look at, and we'll be providing more information shortly, as we know, as we get more feedback on our concept plan and know what direction is going toward approvals, then we can pull everything together. And we're well on our way there right now. But we, the 100, of the 195 residential lots that are in the plan that we're proposing, we're anticipating that we're going to, we hope that our sales are strong. But we're anticipating that they're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 40 lot sales a year. Then the building would occur later. So, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a five-to-seven-year buildout here, that all that traffic's not going to come on day one. And as it then comes, we'll be able to, you know, determine other things, like the appropriate time to do this intersection. And it will build over time. If we do the construction this year that we're hoping to do and sell the lots we're hoping to sell, those homes would start building late in the year or in the spring, and they won't, traffic won't actually occur until next year. There's always a delayed effect. So, in this regard, you know, the way I look at it, and I'm, you may not consider me to be objective, but, you know, time's your friend as it relates to the 138 connection. We can see how things build, and then based on other things that are happening in the city, you can determine what is the right intersection at the appropriate time. And the other thing that's important, and we will do what we can to help, but this is really as much in the city's court as it is in ours, is to negotiate with the DOT, and maybe you'll find a way that that intersection will be built to, on their dime, similar to the Robie Road one, which now, since we last were in front of you, is now going to be part of their plans in 2021. Is that right, you guys? I think. So, that took, when we were here last and talked about off-site needs, that was a, I think, a 1.5 million estimate that now has come off from the off-site needs, and we'll work to do the same thing on 138.
Did you have a follow-up? I know Regina's waiting too.
I have a follow-up for that. Today, there was some discussion about TIF at the legislative level, and one of the concerns was that, you know, and this is up, this is subject to some review, I think, by the Supreme Court, but that once the development takes place, it's started, whether or not it's okay to go back for TIF money on a development that has already begun. So, that is kind of an outstanding question at this point, because I would assume that Ford Development would be building this without a lot of TIF money, without TIF money, and get this whole thing started, and then suggest to the city that there'll be TIF money for the connection to Highway 138. I'm a little bit concerned about that, given what's happening right now legislatively and within the courts as to whether or not TIF can be used in an ongoing project like that. I raise it as an issue, because I just, I just studied it today. I don't know if you know about-
You know, I can honestly say, I'm not familiar with-
Okay.
And I'll just comment to that. I haven't heard that. I'm on the advocacy team for the League of Municipalities, and I'll be having an annual dinner a week from tomorrow with the cities and villages, and our lobbyists from that group will be there, and I'll certainly follow up on that, because that's the first I've heard of it. So, we'll definitely-
It's a new issue that I just heard.
And I would certainly lobby, you know, against that. I mean, you can't make something retroactive when you're in the middle of a project. I can't even see where the state would support that, but we would certainly be a voice at the table. Alder Person Hirsch, you're waiting.
No, it's to follow up with Alder Person Riley. Just to clarify that as you're building the northern route, you are putting in the, out the road out to Deer Point Road, out to Robie Road. There's not going to be a delay in the development in the northern part and the connection to the Robie Road.
Correct. It will connect, as we do this-
At the same time. So, as you're developing, you're putting in that intersection. It's not going to be a delay like previously where there was a delay. It's going to happen at the same time. I don't, I guess, I'm just making sure that I understand that as you develop on the northern part, you are also putting in that connection for public safety and everything else on the Deer Point Road, that there is no gap between five houses being built, and then all of a sudden you'll make that connection. It's at that same time.
Correct.
Well, I just, are you saying you guys are going to build Oak Opening Drive all the way up to Deer Point and then Deer Point over to 51?
No, that's not what, I'm saying, we're making the connection when those improvements occur as a separate issue.
You're making the connection of Oak Opening Drive up to the northern boundary of your plat.
Right at the plat there.
Right. And the posture we're in with respect to the extension of Oak Opening Drive up to Deer Point and the Deer Point over to 51 is that we're being asked to negotiate an agreement with the town that would allow for those roads to be improved, number one. And number two, we're being asked to use TIF money to fund that.
I think Rodney has a comment on that.
It's just important to highlight, there physically is a road that does extend to the plat line on the north side. Improvements are required as part of our understanding, so these, these roads would have to be upgraded. But there physically is a drivable route to the northern plat line using Deer Point and Oak Opening to the plat line. So, yes.
I understand that, but from conversations a few years ago, that was part of the negotiation was that that road is widened, because it's a very narrow road, and that it also includes a bike path. That was part of what we discussed-
No dispute.
Right. That hasn't changed.
Not in dispute.
Yeah.
Yep. Just to be clear, where we are with that is that the resolution that was adopted approving the preliminary plat said with respect to this issue, that one of the conditions of approval is, says, "An agreement that provides access to and connectivity between the proposed Oak Opening Drive within the plat, and Oak Opening Drive and Deer Point Drive within the town of Rutland continuing to Highway 51 must be approved and executed by the city and the town of Rutland. The agreement must provide for the improvement of Oak Opening Drive and Deer Point Drive within the town of Rutland in a manner that is acceptable to the town, Rutland, and the city." So, that was where things were left.
Right. And that's the path we're continuing to go on. In fact, we met with Rutland at their office a couple months ago, and during the last election, the former town chairperson decided not to rerun, so they have a new town chairperson. So, we have to reconvene with that group to continue the discussion. We don't anticipate any issues based on what we were told by the outgoing. So, we expect to be able to execute that agreement. And just to add, the 138 south agreement, that was almost a two-year process, and I can tell you, these guys spent a lot of time and money to make that happen. And I was part of those discussions as an alderperson. I went to some of the meetings, and they literally flew in people from out of state to help execute that. So, these guys, you know, put a lot into that to make sure that we were in a position where we could get that agreement, so when we're ready, we can make that connection. Alder Person Legaki?
I remove my request.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? Alder Person Haley?
Yeah, so if I'm approaching, let's say this is kind of halfway done, but we don't have the connection yet. I'm approaching from 138. I don't want to bother with taking a left turn onto 51 and the left turn onto Jackson. I'm just going to cut through that access road by the Walmart. As, I'm wondering if there are concerns about eventually overloading that, that access road. And I had a second question. Alder Person Hirsch was talking about the emergency vehicle, I guess, tolerances. Would there be concerns if there's just that dead end in that initial phase for fire trucks being able to access?
I can speak to the dead end issue. Generally, we either have a hammerhead or a physical round, a temporary cul-de-sac placed at the end of dead ends. But just to reiterate, there would still be a connection to that area from the north as well as the Jackson Street, but at the end of the north plat, if you will. And if I can go to this diagram, I'll show you a little more closely.
And I would say that making that northernly connection is much better than our current situation there. We have, the assisted living's going to open up in the fall, and then we're anticipating the hotel to be built, and right now, we only have one access road to all that. So, getting that Oak Opening connection, I think, is critical, whether we proceed with this or not.
So, at this terminus, or at this endpoint, there would generally be some type of physical constructed, temporary turnaround, if you will.
Thank you.
President Mieske?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, we need that connection, and I agree that the city should be doing the memorandum of understanding with the town to do it, but majority of you were not here during, when this was being developed in the beginning, and it was bruising, and it was ugly, and it was decisive, and the major issue was about funding a greenfield development with TIF money. And people that agree with it are no longer sitting on this council, and it wasn't because they didn't want to be, it was because it's not what the citizens wanted. So, what we're talking about now is, understand that once we get the understanding, they're going to come back and they're going to ask for more TIF money to develop that connection. And I said it once before, I'm sorry, but I will not vote for any more TIF money for Ford Development. We've given them their SART. They've gotten it to the point where they can make money. I think they've done a really good job. They've been cooperative, but it's also very clear that TIF money from here on out is not going to happen, at least not with me, and not with my constituents do not want it. So, I just want you to understand that, where this path is going, where we're going to be ending up here eventually down the road, on both these openings, on 138 and on the Deer Point improvement, let's call it.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. Given the council president's comments, are we, we are not, though, committing ourselves to TIF money by saying, "Let's go ahead with the north addition phase," am I correct? Okay, thank you.
Well, that depends.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Leave it to a lawyer to say that.
It's going to be more complicated than that, okay? I, if the council's position is, it will only prove the north addition phase if you know that you're going to get the-
If you know that you're going to get the extension of Oak Opening Drive up to Deer Point, you're going to get that improvement work done. If you're saying that's going to have to happen as part of that phase, I think there's likely to be a TIF request to pay for that, to pay for that work. You're not being asked to vote on approving that tonight. I mean, the, the two questions we're looking for direction on, one was the 138 intersection. Are you willing to allow the north addition phase to go forward without requiring that connection to be made now and reserve the right to deal with that in the future phase? That's one issue you're being asked to, to weigh in on. The other issue you're being asked to at least provide feedback on, if you want to, if you don't, then we'll have to deal with it later, is how do you want to deal with the, the request for TIF funding for, for that Oak Opening Drive up through the town of Rutland? Is that if, if TIF is just not on the table, I guess we need to know that.
Do you know that tonight, in your opinion?
No, we don't need to know it tonight. But if we don't know it tonight, then it'll just be kick that can down the road.
Yeah. I mean, it's a question that we don't have a request at this point. And for some people, a dollar may be too much. For other people, who knows? So until we get a request, we really can't make a decision on that.
As a matter of logistics, it seems to me that if we allow this to go forward, and they are doing this building, which I tend to think we should do, don't we, to some extent, create some more leverage for ourselves? Because now they've invested these sums to develop this area, and they still have to have that access. So I don't know that we hurt ourselves at this time.
Well, I think what would happen is we'd be drafting an agreement.
We'd be doing an agreement for this north addition phase. And so that agreement right now, as I imagine what it's likely to look like, is going to require the construction and the installation of Oak Opening Drive up to the property line, up there.
Got it.
And then southerly to what point, Rodney? Down to there. And then it's going to require the construction of that road up into serving those single-family homes. So it's going to require the construction of those improvements. I don't know yet whether there's going to be any request for TIF funding for that work. The other thing I believe that agreement's likely to require, or that the council's going to want to require be addressed before it will authorize that phase to go forward, is that Oak Opening Drive to the north of the plat and Deer Point, that they are improved. My guess is the council's going to say, "That needs to happen if that phase is going forward." Question, I just don't know how that's going to be done yet. I don't know if that's going to be something where the council says, "As long as we have an agreement with the town that allows us to do that, then we will get it done, and we'll use TIF to pay for that." Or if the council's going to say, "No, we need an agreement with the town that allows that to be done, but the developer's going to have to pay for that, or we're going to have to negotiate some cost sharing." Those, that's what I see the possi, those are the different ways I see the development agreement moving forward. And I, I don't know exactly how the council's going to answer all those questions yet.
I, I think when we get that deep into the discussion, that's at a meeting where we'll be in closed session.
Got you. Okay.
Do you have anything else to follow up?
If I may, just, thanks. One, are we, are we in a position where we would be endeavoring to vote on some of these options tonight, or is this just pure discussion?
That's up to you. I think, at least on the Oak Opening Drive intersection, if the council is comfortable making a decision on that tonight, that would be helpful, because that deals with one of the major issues in terms of your decision on that, really, if your decision is to allow the north addition phase to go forward without requiring that now and kick, and leave that for the next phase, now we know how to approach that issue. If your decision is, you don't want to let that north addition phase go forward until you see how the rest of the plat is changing, well, we're not even talking about the north addition then. We should just shelve that and wait till the plan amendment process is over, and we get a new preliminary plat.
Alderperson Borsma?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I, I would be more comfortable with knowing, I mean, it, it almost looks like, on that Deer Point thing, it'll be, it'll be a, a road to nowhere or to an inadequate street, at least. I would like to know, you know, if they're talking about TIF money that's going to be required to make that an adequate road, how much TIF money we're talking about. I think we're premature on this, because we need to know what TIF money is going to be requested for us to do an adequate job, because, because otherwise, it puts us in some jeopardy, too. If it goes to a road that is going to be totally undeveloped, like Deer Point Road is right now, I think it puts us in a, a bad spot. I think it just puts, I think we need to know how much TIF money we're talking about. I, I know we're avoiding the issue of TIF money, but I don't think that we can actually legitimately avoid what is going to be the ultimate issue, which is TIF money. So the issue's going to be whether or not there's enough votes on council to approve TIF money or not. But I think we just don't know enough right now. That's my feeling on it. I would be more, I'd be more settled if, if the developer would tell us what they think it's going to cost, or that we look into it, see how much it's going to cost to, at least to make Deer Point Road a viable option.
Alderperson Riley, and then Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems to me, though, that what is before us is whether or not we say we don't care about 138 right now with, in conjunction with proceeding to start getting north, the north addition, going, construction, et cetera, sale of lots, which I frankly, I'd like to see something start to happen here, obviously not at some grotesque expense, that, that is leveraged against us in the future. But with respect to this issue and 138, I think in my questions that I asked of Councilperson Hirsch, it satisfied me that we don't need to require the 138 in order to give consent to the developer to say, "Start working on the north addition phase." So that's, that's what I'm thinking is actually before us, as I, as I see it.
Alderperson Reeves?
Yep. So along those lines, so it sounds like there's actually two things. And one, I would be more comfortable with having a conversation about the, the north addition, preserving the opportunity for the developer to participate financially, I think is the words you used, to get that piece off the table. But I, I don't know that I would wave the flag, you know, the, the start flag for the north addition, because we had the map up on that, you know, the opening at 138, but there's a lot of questions I have about the financing and the logistics. And so I'd like to move that conversation forward, but I feel like I need a lot more specifics before we talk about, you know, go ahead anyway, without knowing what the cost will be and the specific plan. Because it does sound like there's a lot of safety. And I'm not convinced that, I don't see that tidied up and mapped out yet to my comfort, anyway.
You know, it might help just to talk through at a high level what the process looks like going forward, because, you know, people might not really know. So there has been a, a final plat for the north addition submitted. It's been filed with the city. That's, has to go to the plan commission and then to the council. And at that time, the council will have to decide whether to approve it, approve it with conditions, or disapprove it. One of the conditions will almost certainly be a requirement that there's a development agreement entered into that addresses the construction of public improvements within the plat, and addresses the construction of those improvements outside the plat, north of the plat. And I, it would be impossible to have that discussion without the developer's TIF request by that time. So I believe you're going to have your TIF request for any TIF funding that's requested for any of that work, you will have that before you by the time you're voting on something like that. And I completely understand the concern about making a decision about making TIF money available for that area without a better understanding of what that looks like. So that, I think you can, you can say, "Well, we could put that off until we have that information and we're presented with that decision." On the intersection at 138, you could put that issue off, too, and say, "We're not going to decide that until later." But I don't think that raises the same question about TIF funding, at least at this stage, because you're not being, the council isn't going to be asked in connection with this phase to make TIF funding available to construct that intersection. What you're going to be asked to do is either, is to put it off, to put that decision off. And so I guess you don't have to decide that tonight, but it's a different kind of question.
I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Again, I, I think this is more straightforward than it seems, and maybe I'm missing something, but it seems to me what is before us is, do we simply say we are not going to require that you commit to the 138 intersection or improvements there or anything else in order for you to move forward with this particular phase? And it seems to me that we don't need to have that commitment to 138 in order to allow the, the developer to proceed with the north addition phase. And if I understand what council was just explaining, I believe I do, is, is that any considerations with respect to TIF requests would be dealt with as, after we get this approval, or as we go along, or for a final, final plan. Am I correct in that?
Yes, with respect to any TIF funding for this phase, you're going to have to address that before we, before you make a final decision approving this phase.
But tonight, if we are really looking at, are, are we going to burden the developer with the 138 at this point in order for them to just proceed with this phase, correct?
That is certainly the big question.
Right. Okay.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd move that we go with option B, as articulated in this memo from Rodney and from council. It just makes sense to me. I don't think we're risking a great deal, and we're getting something moving. So I, I would move that we go with option B in this memo with respect to not requiring the 138 be a condition of moving forward with the north addition phase.
Can you clarify B or D?
B. B as in boy. B as in best option.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Bartlett. Did you catch all that, Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments on, on the, on the motion? So the motion, as I understand it, is to approve the option B as in boy, which is up on the screen right now? Alderperson Borsma?
I still want to know what we're going to do about this connection to Deer Point, because that's going to require TIF money.
Well, that's not what the motion is right now, though.
I understand, but I just want to clarify that we're going to need, we're going to need to know.
We should vote on the motion, and then we can talk about that if you'd like.
Can I just wish?
Sure, go ahead.
Sid, on that one, I guess, option D would address that. So if that's not what you want, if you want more information before you vote, then you would vote no on this one, and then make a motion to go forward. Number D as in dog, or delay, or whatever Riley would put it as.
Delinquent.
Thanks for the clarification. Alderperson Harley, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. So option B would allow the north addition phase to proceed in other stages of approval. Is that right?
What was the question?
Option B would allow the north addition phase to proceed in other stages of approval.
What do you mean by other stages of approval?
What, what you're talking about with the, the final...
The development agreement and the TIF request and all that.
We would, we would continue with that approval process. Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I heard two no's on that motion carries. Anything else you want to discuss on this? Do we need any more direction than that? Are you okay with where we're at?
Well, we, we still are going to have to deal at some point with how to, with the TIF request. And, and so I guess what I would say is, developer needs to make a request, so we know what they're asking for. And I would assume that this phase is not going to happen without figuring out how that, those improvements in the town of Rutland, Rutland are going to be paid for. So if there's a, if that's going to be a, something that is going to be a, a TIF request item, we need to know that.
Okay. Couple things, all, Planning Director Sheal has a comment he wants to make, and then Sid has his hand up.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because that's exactly what I think we need to proceed. If there's, if there's going to be a vote for absolutely no TIF money, is that a problem?
Well, not part of a TIF request or not vetted by staff at this point. We've received an estimate of cost for the improvements to Oak Opening Deer Point to make those conditions applicable. About $400,000 was their estimate of that cost. I was trying to dig for that during the, the discussion.
And, and just one other quick thing as we proceed here. Everybody here understand how the TIF works? Because if you don't, we'd like to be able to get you some information. I know Jamin has done some preliminary work. Many of us have seen variations of presentations in the past. Is that something that you guys would like to see? Or what?
I've done some reading.
To the policy, too.
Yeah, we did update the policy.
I've done some reading on my own, and I would appreciate the resources that you guys have used.
Okay. Something you guys, I see some heads nodding. We'll try to put something together. I'm looking at Finance Director, and I'm sure he can come up with something. He always does. But we'll, we'll try to introduce you to it. So it's not as complicated as it sounds, but you certainly want to be able to understand it. We want you guys to make educated decisions as we move forward on this stuff. Alderperson Borsma, and then Johnson.
So is there any other route for money than TIF money for improvements on Deer, Deer Point?
I wish I could apply for a grant for it.
I mean, you know, is there any other way that we'd pay for it?
Well, the only three pots of money I'm aware of at this point are TIF money, developer money, or other city money.
That was my question. Do we have any other access to money besides TIF money?
Well, you'd have to borrow it, or, or they'd have to pay for it. And I think they're going to make their case at some point when they make their TIF request. And, and part of the presentation will be what the requirement is in order to justify the request.
And I would, I would add that we should probably have at least the new council members know what the options are in terms of pay or go, as you go, and, you know, just, just pretty complete picture about TIF.
Jamin's nodding his head. Did you have something?
Yeah, and just when, when they, you do address the TIF issue, and you're going to talk about it and explain it further, I think we should specifically talk about the forward development of TIF. I'm going to kill a question.
TIF eight?
Yeah.
So you want to update on the condition of TIF eight?
You know, the condition of the TIF, you know, what it's standing and so on.
Well, yeah, we should be able to show you where we're at.
TIF eight or seven?
It's seven.
I said eight, so I mean seven.
Seven.
Eight.
So we can give you an analysis of where we're at, or where we're projected to go with that. Anything else you'd like to have here, or, I think?
Motion to adjourn?
That's what I'm looking for. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody chimes in for that one.
Who was first? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries.
Between you two.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Come on, beat the post. Sorry.